Good morning. I now call the August 9, 2023 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:01 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. I'll now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules for this public workshop. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the speaker's name in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout the meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each of their days, I would ask that we please pause for a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, can you please provide the proof of publication for today's meeting?
The notice for the August 3, 2023, work session was published in the O'Callaghan Gazette on July 28, 2023. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under "Proof of Publication."
Thank you so much. We'll now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, nice to see you after the last few hours. So I don't have any additional items other than what I shared yesterday if I could just introduce the topic. Thank you. We're pleased to have Ms. Boston Ellis and her team here again this morning, and we will continue the presentation of the tentative budget now, including capital, debt service, and other related items to the budget. So thank you again for the team and all the hard work that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Dr. Campbell, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. You were smiling at me. You caught me off guard. Thank you for that. Again, we are appreciative of your attention as we continue on discussing the tentative budget for 2324. Before we get started on that, I'd like to bring your attention to some additional attachments that may be on your desk, should be on your desk. We have two corrections from the prior meeting. Tab 3, we corrected the slide number 10, and then also slide 15 was corrected. In addition, for tab 3, there is additional backup. I said that I would bring back to you that actual policy, Policy 6235, and it discusses fund balance, and that is in conjunction with Slide 46. So as I stated prior, we are going to bring an amended or another update to this policy back to you during this year. Under tab 3, I think there was a request by a Board Member, Conrad, about the media allocation. While there is no handout, just want to let you know that there was a carryover for the media allocation from the general fund of $300,250 plus their allocation for the 2324 year, it's $218,013. You may recall instructional materials was rolled into our Bay Student allocation, but we made the decision to continue providing that allocation to our schools, the allocation from 2223. Also, under tab 3, Slide 91, referendum, there are several schedules provided to you, and this reflects the units, art, music, media, and PE, and it reflects those that are in the general fund and referendum. I believe one of our Board Members asked a question about what units were in the general fund, and so we're providing that to you as well. Per our notes, the item that is still pending is the athletic summary, and we will provide that to you. We have a couple of departments that we're waiting on information from. They're really busy getting schools set up and started, so we will get that to you as soon as possible.
Ms. Boston Ellis, just quickly on that handout that you gave us, the budgeted units for the music, PE, and art, just from my information, I'm assuming Fund 1,000-
Is general fund.
And 1,300 is referendum.
Is referendum.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing that up. Sometimes we forget. We understand, but we should have labeled that as general fund and referendum.
Thank you.
So today, moving on to Slide 2, we will discuss all of the other funds that represent about $347 million, which is about 38% of our budget. That includes capital, debt service, food service, the grants, and our internal service Our capital project, as you know, is predominantly currently funded by the 1.5 mils. So this is a schedule that we used last week, but it is directing you to the millage for capital projects, which is 1.5 mil. This, again, is determined by our legislators. It has not changed from the prior year. So what the 1.5 mil generates is $50.2 million, and this is an increase over the prior year of $7.5 million, and that is based on the increase in the property values. We'd like to include this slide just to bring the memory back to the capital projects used to be a 2.0 millage. And as you can see, from 2008 through 2014, based on the reduction in the millage, it went from 2.0 to 1.75, and it landed on 1.5 mil. So just to give you a historical perspective, as you can see, this reduction has impacted the school district and all school districts by about $151.6 million. We call that lost revenue. So today, capital projects funds, we're only focusing on the 2224 budget. That is tentative only. It does not reflect any changes regarding any other funding sources. So this is specific to the 202324 budget at tentative. As you can see, the revenue generated is $52.4 million on Slide 7, and the 1.5 mil represents 96% of the funding that we are estimating for 2324. The other small amounts, other capital projects is fencing, and that's about 1%. And then, of course, our charter schools will receive about less than 1%, $282,000 from PICO. And again, none of this reflects on any decisions that will be made going further. In terms of expenditures, $83.8 million, as you can see, between renovation and remodeling and new construction, that represents 54% plus 18, so 72% of the capital projects funding budget is new construction as well as remodeling and renovation, those categories. Another 9% is maintenance, and of course, our debt service represents about 12%. Charter schools, the PICO, plus their portion of the 1.5 mil is about, it's less than 1%, $343,000. And the reason that that is different between the revenue that's generated is you'll see the charter school PICO revenue is $282,000, but the charter school expenditure includes their portion of the 1.5 mil. So that's why there's about a $61,000 difference there.
Chair, are we taking breaks to ask questions? Was there natural breaking points in this, Ms. Boston Ellis?
We could after every fund or however you want to do it.
Okay. And thank you for that question, Dr. James. I was, in thinking about this, I figure capital projects is where we're going to have the most questions today, and it may be that we do need to have a bit of interruption because I also wanted to just make a statement there as well. So with this one being a little bit smaller than our other presentation, and again, capital projects probably being the crux of where our questions are going to be, would it be okay if we took individual questions along the way? Is that going to mess you up in your flow? Okay, perfect. Dr. James.
So my just quick question was, that $343,000 has to be shared between all of the charter schools we have in Marion County?
Yes. What the legislation has done is only those schools that are eligible are included, and for us, there's only two that meet the criteria for receiving these dollars. But in addition to that, we are only, it's only 20% of what their allocation will be. Next year goes up to 40%, the following year, 60%, so that number could eventually be a lot larger.
So why is it only two? I think we have-
Excuse me, for PICO, it's only two, but for the 1.5 mil, it's all four schools.
Okay. Well, do we have five now, right? Technically?
Well, five, yes.
Okay. So which two get the PICO money, then?
The two, right now, that get the PICO is Marion Charter and O'Callaghan Middle.
Okay. And what, is that because of how many students they have?
No. MacIntosh is pending, well, you have to have two years for PICO, so you have to be in existence for at least two years for PICO. MacIntosh, they're pending based on their academics, so they don't meet all the criteria right now. Once grades come out, or, and I'm moving over in the wrong lane right now, but once we receive that they've met the curriculum criteria, then they may be eligible for the PICO. But right now, all five of them are eligible for the 1.5 mils. It's just a graduated amount that they receive. So there's a calculation, and then they receive 20%, and then next year, I believe, it's 40, and then 60, so forth, until it becomes of 100%.
And then my last question is, when we're passing through money for Step Up for Students, for Family Empowerment Scholarship, that money doesn't come through capital money? It only comes through another fund, or does it come through both?
The money for the Family Empowerment Scholarships is just, impacts the general fund.
Thank you for those responses and questions. I, my, I was a comment specifically on charter schools as well, and you explained it very well, but my comment was that other districts would see this look very differently. And the fact that our district does only have four soon-to-be this coming school year, five charter schools, if we had a one-to-one ratio, and we had 50 charter schools like some other districts have almost a one-to-one ratio, then that number will continue to grow. And if we do have additional charter schools in the future, the number will continue to grow.
Yes.
Okay.
You may recall, I think it was two or three years ago, there was an allocation, and then the following year, it was repealed. So, and it became a district decision, but this was legislated this time.
Right.
So next year, it may look different.
Right, and this is new legislation?
Yes.
Yes.
And it may look different next year.
Sure. Thank you very much for that explanation. Any other questions on charter schools while we were right there? Okay. You can move on. Thank you.
Slide 8 is providing the capital projects revenue sources. So as you can see, we have beginning fund balances in all the different categories. The first category, C-O-N-D-S, is the motor vehicle license revenue. These dollars were bonded by the state many, many years ago, and this is our portion of that amount, and they tell us what it's going to be every year. So on that line, the budgeted revenue, we just use the same as last year since we don't have that amount available. Also, the ending fund balance will be $159,000 estimated, and when the five-year plan is discussed with you, they will share with you what are considered survey recommended projects. So those dollars can only be spent on what is considered a survey recommended project, and we have a list of those projects. We just talked a little bit about the PICO charter. They had an estimated beginning fund balance of $14,578, and then there, we're budgeting that $282,000, which may be amended once we find out whether or not MacIntosh gets the funds. And just another point I'd like to make, these dollars come into capital, but then we have to transfer them to the general fund so that we can pay them. So they're not paid directly out of capital, it's transferred to the general fund, and it's a part of their allocation that they receive. Then we look at the 1.5 mil. We have $29.4 million beginning balance, and a little bit later on, you'll see all the projects that are in that beginning fund balance. We've budgeted $50.3 million, estimating expenditures of $79 million, and it looks like we have a negative balance, but there's some corrections that need to be made by the end of our fiscal year that'll correct that. And again, these are on survey recommended projects. Going down, impact fees, we have a balance of $9,852. We have no projects associated with that because we can only spend those dollars on growth-related projects per the ordinance, so we've been carrying that balance for a few years, and interest also adds to that. Sales tax, we have a beginning fund balance of $4.6 million. No projects slated against that. Again, this is from our prior sales tax referendum, and we can only use it on those identified areas, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. We did use some of the funds in a couple of years ago or last year where we, I believe, we purchased something for Liberty Middle, I think it was the generator. Then also, the buses, again, just a correction that we need to make for that $1. It's actually less than a dollar. Kayla told me it's around about 53 cents, but this is the lease purchase of those 150 buses that we purchased in 2019, I believe. And then other capital projects, which are the security grants as well as some school safety improvements, and these were grants that we received from the state. Beginning fund balance of $5,588. We're estimating the revenue, I believe Mr. McFattin shared that with you, we have a grant of $295,000 coming to us. We're estimated spending $361,000. Again, that negative balance will be corrected by year end. Basically, what we're doing is filling the gap for the fencing with general fund dollars. So we do, we did get funding over the past four years for fencing, but we had to add money from the general fund to make up for the cost because those, fencing cannot be charged to the referendum. So we've used general fund dollars to help us with the costs related to fencing.
Ms. Boston Ellis, I have a quick question on the impact fees. While it's a little less than $10,000 we have in that fund, do we know the area of the county within which the impact fees were collected?
Yes, we'll get to that-
Okay, perfect.
-minute, yeah. I think we'll be able to answer that.
Okay.
So again, all of our funding balances or the ending balances will be updated at year end. So this has always been a topic of discussion, and Ms. Thrower usually jumps in here and talks about PICO funding comes from the gross receipts tax. A lot of it were landlines, utilities, and most folks have cell phones, they don't have landlines anymore, and I believe in one of your legislative discussions, you've talked about trying to identify another funding source for PICO. So we received PICO for new construction, we used to, but as you can see, since 2112, 13, we have not received any funding, and I believe years prior to that as well, but we've only listed, looks like 10, 12 years here. PICO maintenance, on the other hand, we used to receive a lot of dollars, and that helped us with our maintenance expenditures. You can see in 2014, it was $824,000. It increased over the next two years, and then it started decreasing. What has been shared with us is that those dollars that are raised are provided to the charter schools to help them with their capital needs. So these were sources of revenue that we used to get, and we depended on those as well. So impact fees, a lot of discussion last night about impact fees, and we love to provide historical reference to the collection rates. As you can see, this one was effective 2006 October, and it was restricted to the use of funds, limited to growth-related capital improvements. And it was divided between single-family, multifamily, and the mobile homes. And then, beginning in 2011, those fees, the Board at that time made a decision to suspend the collection of those fees based on, I believe, the economy of our community at that time.
Dr. James has a question there.
I just want a quick question. Is there a possibility that you could include this exact slide in Friday's presentation? Or maybe you already have decided to, or are we doing a presentation?
I was looking for Lauren DeBick. I'm sorry, that's why I did.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member James, that's a great question. We do have a presentation, and so I'm looking, I know Ms. Dobbins is presenting.
It's just great historical information. It might even be cool if there was a line for every year that said suspended from 2011 to 2024. I think that would even be more impactful.
I don't see why we couldn't include it, and I'm looking at the team. Did we submit already? And did they post?
I think it was submitted last week.
It would have to be an addendum, but I don't see why we couldn't, and I think it's a great idea.
That's a great visual. And there may be additional slides. I'm not-
Come up today.
There may be additional slides in this section that we also want included, so perhaps at the conclusion of today's work session, there could be an amended presentation that's sent to the county and requested that they upload it as well as an amended, you know.
Thank you. I just, I think it is, paints a very clear picture.
Certainly, and if I may, my recollection, and I can pull it up, the presentation that was submitted is all specific to the facilities based on the results of the study. So it doesn't speak to impact fee historical knowledge and data, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So just so the Board is aware, it's the presentation that you all had based on our recommendation, based on the study that we recommended to the Board. So for further conversation, thank you.
I agree with Dr. James. I think perhaps even beginning the presentation with just a bit of historical information might be helpful since we are going to come in with a lot of information, but we can continue to see if there are additional items that we might want to add. I also wanted to mention, while Ms. Thrower isn't here, to talk about PICO funding, because you're right, that's always a big thing that she loves to talk about. What I have noticed in the last couple of years, that we have put forth that as a part of our platform for legislative conversations, what I've seen, and we haven't had this conversation collectively, but what I have seen is that we're about the only district that's beating that drum. And the reason is because nearly every other district in the state has either sales tax or impact fees or both. And so we're the only one beating that drum, and I don't know that, or nearly the only one, and I don't know that we need to continue to beat it because everybody else has figured it out within their local communities, and the legislature doesn't have any interest in assisting us to do something that our local community needs to rally around us to do. So those are my thoughts on PICO funds. Thank you.
Again, this is historical revenues collected beginning 2006 all the way through, basically, when it ended. I believe it ended about, let's see, 2011, 2011, but the remaining funds were either interest or, again, for the most part, interest. And on the right, it shows you what we did with those dollars. Emerald Shores, Wing Edition, we are allowed, or we were allowed, based on the document in the ordinance where we could, we could pay for legal consultation out of these dollars. There were legacy offset improvements, off-site improvements, and as you can see, Stone Crest, they had collected impact fees, but it's a 55 and odor, so we had to refund those dollars to Stone Crest. And then, these are different property sites that were purchased, and we are using some of those sites for our schools that are projected to be built. The last item was Wyamina Park Elementary Art Music and their Wing Edition. So right now, we have a little less than $10,000 available in that, but again, we would have to designate it for a property that is gross necessitated, and we look to Mr. Hurley to define that for us in terms of where those dollars would go. So they sit until we are able to use them.
And perhaps this is a question for Attorney Powers, but in not foreseeing that we would have any legal questions to come forth in the next couple of weeks, but should that be the case and we need additional consultation, would, do you believe the impact fees that we have collected previously in this close to $10,000 would also be available for us to have legal consultation as it had been previously? Or that may be a question you need to think about. But since that is something that was included previously, that they spent, the previous Board spent nearly $2,000 in legal consultation fees on impact fees, if we have something like that in the foreseeable future with nearly $10,000 banked in this-
Yeah, I'd want to be clear that we, we would only be able to use the impact fee money for, starting from, forward from the approval. So I don't-
She's talking about the stuff that's left over, though, the $10,000 that's left over. The $10,000 that's left over.
Like, I think what I'm hearing you say is, let's say that we need to consult an attorney on one of the two sites, the Whining Oak site, for the gopher turtles. That's the gopher turtle site, right? So, let's say we needed to consult someone about the gopher turtles on the Whining Oak sites, which was purchased with this money. Could we use that little $10,000 to have that consultation?
Yes, I believe so. And I actually had just been doing some research on exactly that kind of item. And I can actually pull up and show you what I.
Or could we use it to get rid of the gopher turtles?
I want you to rephrase that.
Yeah, to move them, to relocate.
We're not disappearing. We are safely, correctly moving the gopher turtles to relocate.
Relocating.
Relocating. So, my question is, though, that's going to come at a cost. And it's not, $10,000 won't cover it. But could we use the $10,000 to help relocate the gopher turtles?
I do not believe that, I'm not sure that I'm following the question correctly. Because where we are is, collection of impact fees can only be used, any collected impact fees or unspent impact fees can only be used for the benefit of projects that currently exist or are existing in the future, not ones that were previously approved. But if, at the time that those impact fees were collected, that particular item had not yet been approved, then it may be used.
Yeah, I don't think we're tracking.
Yeah, I think we need to have additional conversation. Let's talk about it later. But just know that we have about $10,000 in collected impact fees from the previous time. And really, it's not. It's interest that has risen over the last 13 years or something on that. So, we have about $10,000 in a fee, in a fund for impact fees, that we have purchased land, we have done a couple of additions on the previous impact fees. And there is some money sitting there, and we can figure out what to do with it whenever the time comes.
And any project that was, that was not approved at the time, that was not yet approved at the time that that request was made or that money was given, that could be spent on. So, that would be the right answer.
I did just have one quick, how did we pay for the schools when we built them the last time? So, Legacy and?
Two more slides.
Okay, we're going to stop stopping you and keep going, Ms. Boston Ellis.
These are really pertinent questions. I get it. So, we also had a sales surtax. At the time, it was for five years. Again, the board voted not to renew or request a renewal of that sales tax, those sales tax dollars. So, at the time, 53% voted for, 47 against. And this was the second time, I believe, the surtax was brought before our community. Previously, it was voted down. So, in the right corner, you'll see what we use those dollars for. Horizon Academy, and you'll see Liberty Middle, it was split funded. What that means is we use 1.5 mil dollars. We, of course, use the sale tax. And so, those projects. And many years ago, we did receive dollars to help with capital improvements. When class size amendment was approved, there was dollars provided to school districts to help build wings and expand schools to help with meeting class size requirements. So, at that time, when we were building Liberty, we used all sources available. Same with Marion Oaks, same with Legacy. There was a middle school DD, which we did not do. And I believe that is the Lake Ware Middle property. That was not done. And then, also, there was something called Elementary W, which was not survey recommended. So, that was not built as well. But we did collect 111 million, again, at a time it ended when the economy started turning around. So, we'll move back to the current budget, 2324 year. The first slide you'll see here, these are all the capital projects that are funded for 2324. Give you a moment to take a look at those, see if there's any specific questions. And again, this was at tentative budget. We sort of gave them a deadline. We've got to get tentative budget done. And so, if there will be any changes, Ms. Dobbins and Mr. Knight will present that to you when they do the five-year plan. And we will make those corrections for final budget. And if we don't meet that timeline, we'll do an amendment to capital to make any changes we need to make.
Is every high school getting stadium lights? I don't see any scoreboards, just saying.
I was going to ask a scoreboard question as well. It does look like, I'm going through the list. It looks like we do have a lot of stadium lights. And I'm also grateful to see the stage lighting at Forest High School, because I know that's a huge issue right now for their auditorium.
What does the Booster Stadium line item mean?
Basically, I believe, maintenance. And I don't want to speak for facilities, but it's typically. Because that Booster Stadium is, you know, the school district, it doesn't really belong to Vanguard or any other school, even though they use it. So, probably some things that they've seen that need to be repaired. Okay. Do you want to come up here?
All of the, and I'm seeing lots of auditorium lighting at Forest. This is the first one I got to.
Good morning. So, Booster Stadium, I believe, is the lighting also for LED. So, we are unable to get the bulbs for the current lights in our stadiums. As you know, the world is moving over to LEDs. So, we are switching those out to the LED, which will ultimately save us a lot of money in the end.
I do have a question here. It shows Osceola Middle School getting a roof. And that's not accurate any longer, correct?
So, as Teresa pointed out, we had a deadline to get them information. A lot has changed on this slide. So, what you'll have in September 7th is you'll have the updated recommended projects, because we have to now consider the projects moving over to loan, the projects that have come up since this time. But of course, we're on revision 18 of the five-year plan, simply because when we start the process back in June, actually, May, we're working with a tentative budget. And then, we wait to hear how much property insurance is going to cost. We wait to hear how much buses are going to cost us and those things. So, it's a moving target. It is still a moving target. So, these are not written in stone. And you'll see the final recommendations for projects September 7th. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't come back with amendments later on if things pop up.
Thank you. Speaking as an individual board member here, I am grateful to see all the stadium lighting as well as all of the auditorium lighting. That's a challenge in multiple schools and our high schools and how they're using their auditoriums. So, seeing all of our high schools receiving all of that, I am in favor of for sure. So, as we move forward with what that revision 19 looks like in the five-year plan.
I do have a question.
Reverend Cummings.
Couple of questions, two. The buses, is that for replacement buses? Was that?
Yes.
Does that fall under that contract that we entered into the other year to buy buses? Was that? I'm sorry.
Yes. So, as you stated, when we purchased the, or leased purchased 150 buses, there was funds put in there to buy however many we could afford. We started out doing five or six, and of course, the price went up. So, we're down to four. But I believe Ms. Dobbins has also added, I believe it was six additional buses, to come out of those funds as well.
Yes, thank you. So, for the 2324, we have actually increased the number of bus coming out of capital outlay for a couple of reasons. One, because of need. So, we are having to replace a lot of buses. But also, we have been notified that we will see a price increase in December. So, actually, you have upcoming board action for four buses. And that's based on last year's capital outlay allocation. And then, once we approve the five-year plan, we have an additional 1.2 million for this year to move forward with buying buses. And then, you'll see board action in and around October to spend that money to go ahead and hit those buses on pricing before they increase in December.
And then, my second question is, there's a 4.5 million maintenance reimbursement. Was?
Correct. That is what we are allowed to do by law. We transfer 4.5 million from capital to offset some of the maintenance costs in our general fund.
Thank you.
I just, to Reverend Cummings' point, so how many buses does 636,000 bikes?
It's probably those buses that we did not get last year.
Four?
Probably rolled over. There are like 100,000 plus.
That's really not that bad. I mean, that's not a bad price for a whole bus. I mean, you can't even get a Suburban for that.
It doesn't have electric.
Or a Tesla.
Okay.
I'm just kind of surprised. I thought a bus cost more than that. I'm just kind of surprised.
So, what Kayla has told me, that this 600 represents four new buses. But when we get to the carryover, you'll see the dollars that are related to the buses that we were not able to purchase last year.
And we got that price because we were buying so many.
Yes. We were trying to keep buying them. And even though it's not enough, we still wanted to continue to buy buses, because there was a time when we just stopped buying buses. And that's why we are where we are today.
Good price. I'm just kind of surprised, that's all.
Well, it's a locked-in price because of the bulk, right? It's a bulk buy.
We use the state contract for that.
Cool, thank you.
But you'll see more coming back based on what Ms. Dobbins talked about, trying to buy more buses.
Ms. Conrad?
I just have a couple of clarification, clarifying questions. Playgrounds, we've got $50,000, but it says district-wide. What are we doing there? Just because I know early on, very early on, when I joined the board, there was conversation about the addition of playgrounds to our elementary schools. And so, I know $50,000 is not covering that.
That's repair and maintenance for our playgrounds. But you are correct, we are using ESAR funding to do some playground purchases.
Okay, good. And then, one other thing in the last column, safety to life? I just don't know what that is.
Yep. These are based on federal requirements. So, if a school identifies something that they think is not safe, then Chuck Stiegel goes out and identifies whether that meets the criteria. He lets us know, and funds are released to take care of that.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Boston Ellis, I know that the next slide also includes a lot of additional capital projects as well. But line item for vehicles, that's white fleet, I'm assuming?
Vehicles, yes. Yes, the white fleet, or it could be trucks that are needed for technical services or custodial services. It could be all of those.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any additional questions that you see, just shoot us an email, and we can provide more detail. But I guess, since this is tentative, you know, we will be coming back to you. And I think we are making notes so that we can provide a little more detail.
May I, Madam Chair? Since you mentioned vehicles, you may recall about a year, maybe two years ago now, I asked for an analysis done of our white fleet, found that we could save $200,000 just by realigning how we assign white fleet. So, that was underway as well. So, just wanted to remind the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gallet. The next slide, these are the carryover projects. So, that's how we get the beginning fund balance for capital. These are all the projects that were not completed. They're in process from the 2223 year. And they total about $31 million. The next section are the grants that we received for the fencing. As you can see, there's about $361,000 that's available. Are there in the process of finalizing fencing products, projects. And then, of course, the charter school capital outlay, 343,000. So, this is the carryover. Do we want to take a pause for more capital, or we can move on to debt service?
I think we're ready to move on. I know we'll have a lot of questions for Ms. Dobbins on September 7th. But at this point, we can go ahead and move on with the finance portion.
Okay. So, I always remind you that this is not a standalone fund. This is funded by the Capital Projects Fund. So, a lot of times, when we combine all of those funds, and we say we have a $910 million, you know, our budget is $910 million, it's because we were adding across. And that's what accounting requires us to show, these things separately. But this fund, as you will see, is supported 97%. That transfer in from capital. So, 97% of the revenue in this fund is a transfer from the capital, and that's to pay our debt payments. We have a small local and state contribution, and we'll go through that in a minute. And of course, what we spend these dollars on are the principal payment, interest payment, and there are some small fees under 1%. But it's predominantly principal and interest payments on the debt that we have incurred. On slide 17, again, it's just showing you the sources of the funds. The CO and DS withheld, again, that's that motor vehicle license tax, a little small dollar amount. And then, the racing commission, that's the dog races, highlight those type of funds. $223,000, we're estimating. We're estimating investment income of about $6,000. And then, of course, the largest part is the transfer from capital to make the debt payment. So, that budget, that total is 10.3 million in revenue, predominantly from the capital projects. And again, here's what we spend the dollars on, principal, interest, and then dues and fees. Down at the bottom, it gives you sort of a grouping of these expenditures. Again, the, what we call COB, is that motor vehicles license. It's 113,000 estimated. Certificate of Participation, and that's all of the discussions that we're having. We're talking about bonding, we talk about borrowing money. But the way, if you decide to do this, our borrowing capacity is based on using this method of borrowing, and it's called Certificate of Participation. But we tried to simplify it, I guess, in our discussions by saying, this is where we borrow money. It's put out to the market, and we have people who buy the bonds to support this. And we use our property as collateral. So, just say when we purchased a school using Certificate of Participation, or when we improved the schools. I remember Vanguard and Lake Ware were one of the schools that we did remodeling and renovation to. So, those schools become the collateral for that. And this is another method that school districts are allowed to use. So, that borrowing that we potentially will do will be under this umbrella of Certificate of Participation. Hope I haven't confused it anymore. But that's what I refer to. But it is basically, we're borrowing money, and we're going to pay it back using capital dollars. We also have some small revenue bonds that we received from the state. And then, again, the lease purchase agreement. the lease purchase agreement for buses. We have a payment of 1.8 million for the 2324 year. The next slide reiterates all the things that I've said. We have current outstanding debt of 89.7 million. The next column tells you the final payout. So those COBIs, where we used the motor vehicle tax, and the project was refunding another project that we had purchased using the Certificate of Participation. So that final payout would be 2025. And then the revenue bonds, 2031. And then, of course, the Certificate of Participation, which we call COPS, we have a payout in '25 and '27. And then the lease purchase, those 150 buses will be paid off in 2029. So that's what those columns are. The next two columns reflect the interest and principal payment. So if you think about something you want to pay off, say tomorrow, you want to pay off all of that, we would have to come up with 34.5 million if you made the decision, we're going to pay off all of these debts in a perfect world. That would be a great thing to do. And of course, the interest, 3.1 million. So our total outstanding debt was 37.6 million. We've done really well. It would be good one day just to show you 10 years ago what debt we had as comparison to current. The boards have been very conservative. We haven't done things called variable rates where, you know, it would go up every year. It's been flat. We can predict what the payments are going to be. And that's very important when you talk about ensuring that you have enough capital dollars to make these debt payments. When we talk about debt capacity, you may remember PFM coming and talking about, we had, we have a 75% mileage, we can use up to 75% of our revenue generated from capital. But her recommendation to us was to do 50%. Again, because our payments will be tied into the revenue we receive from capital every year. What I would like to point out to you is our debt capacity is at 19.8%. So currently, we're only using 19.8% of our capital dollars to make debt payments. So that's really, really good in terms of looking at what we may borrow in the future. Because we are borrowing funds, and under this Certificate of Participation, we are required to get credit ratings. And they do surveillance pretty much every year. And either Fitch or Moody, we have to provide them a lot of information on our fund balance. This past year, they had a lot of questions about what we are doing with our ESER dollars. And they just dig into our information, realizing that we're tied into the state. You know, we're sort of held hostage based on what we are being allocated by the state. So they came up with a new methodology, and they look at the tax base of your community. They look at the money we have available, our management, and of course, our current debt and pension information. So just past April, they affirmed their rating. They basically did not change it from the prior year, which is really a good thing because we have been downgraded in the past based on what happened to the economy. They understand the structure of funding for schools in Florida, but they still have to provide a rating based on your, really, they look at revenue streams, the growth of the community. So if you ask, you know, what does this matter? What matters is our interest rates. So if we're perceived to be stable and no change, then that should be favorable in terms of if we want to borrow money in the future, our interest rate should reflect that rating. Any more questions on debt? We'll move to food service. Food service, okay. So this is our next fund, food service. Predominantly funded through Fed, through state revenue, 36.7 million. 96% is where those funds come from. We have a little local revenue, and you'll see in a few minutes where that comes from. And our state does supplement our lunch and breakfast programs to the tune of 800, 383,000. What I would like to bring to your attention, in terms of expenditures of that 43.4 million, 92% of that is tied into staff and food. So, you know, I think that's really important to point out that those are the large pieces. And for the last couple of years, with food prices and just the scarcity of food, I believe that department has made a tremendous rebound, and you will see that in a few minutes. And there's also an attachment for this particular slide, just giving you some information about food service. This gives you a really great picture. You can see their profit and loss. Doesn't include fund balance, just revenues versus expenditures. In 1920, on Slide 24, it shows you there was a loss of 2.3 million. Our district had done such a fantastic job under Mrs. Johnson's leadership and had built up fund balance for food service to the point where we had to provide a report to Department of Agriculture of how we were going to spend those dollars because they can only keep three months of expenditure. So anything over that, you have to come up with a plan. And I believe we had to have a letter from the superintendent back then, or the board chair, saying what we were going to do. They submitted a plan. And that's when all of those high schools were remodeled. I don't know if you remember that. They got the sort of like courtyard-style furniture and allowed the schools to come in and provide suggestions. So, and then they bought a lot of equipment to help in the kitchen as well. As you can see, for the 2223 year, food service has rebounded tremendously. And we, they are putting together a plan now of what they are going to do with those excess funds. And it's pretty much the same as in the past, updating equipment, replacing milk cartons and things, or of that. Okay, this is just an overall view of revenue, and we'll look at each category next. So we'll start with federal through state, school lunch reimbursement programs, school breakfast. You can see that there was a swing from budget to budget. You might remember that we were under, we were operating under the summer feeding program even during the year. Right after the school year started, they were switched to the national school lunch program. So that's why that budget, why you see an increase in the school lunch reimbursement and school breakfast reimbursement. You see that about 15 million. But you all see, also see a reduction of 14 million from summer feeding. And that was just because of that switch between programs after they had already built their budget. We were using the summer feeding program, or all school districts were, because that gave them, that gave them sort of more flexibility in how they served and what they served, just because of that COVID word. Okay, so there's also an attachment for that as well. The next category, again, as I stated previously, there's a school breakfast supplement and a school lunch supplement that we receive based on our free and reduced lunch percentages. And then the local revenue, interest on balances, and as you can see, basically à la carte. All schools are 100% community eligibility provision right now. But if a student buys something that is not within that meal plan, then they have to pay. And then, so student à la carte, as well as adult lunches, are in that dollar amount. And then other financing sources, we have not completed, or I believe, just the other day, I believe, we completed the journal entry. For Camp Kiwanis, the district submits reimbursement. So if it costs more than that reimbursement, the district has to reimburse food service. I think it's going to be about 19,000. So it typically doesn't go over 20,000. On Slide 30, salaries and benefits. Again, we talked about a large percentage of their funds go towards salary and benefits as well as food. There is an attachment that lists the employees paid out of food service. Want to bring to your attention, we had moved the cafeteria monitors to ESER last year, based on us thinking that food service might operate at a deficit. But the cafeteria monitors are back in food service. So if you get questions from principals, they have the monitors available. The only thing I'm going to bring to your attention on the next slide is, as you can see, about 400,000 of their funds go toward utility garbage. As you probably know, the majority of our garbage and electric, well, definitely the garbage is from food service, from that department. So we allocate that cost to them. And the next is energy, which is another electricity. We do, we are allowed to prorate, based on square footage, a portion of electricity to food service as well, especially if it's a cafeteria versus a cafeteria, the other way around, the other way around, yeah. Materials and supplies, again, the largest component is food, estimating that we'll see an increase of about 2.3 million in food. And then commodities, that is food that is provided from the federal government to our schools. And so we have to record its value. And again, this will be adjusted at year-end. We have not done that journal entry yet.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Probably not in your neighborhood, but maybe Dr. Gullett knows. Or prior to COVID, we were able to do something called a share table. So instead of a child throwing away their food on their plate, if it was an unopened package, it went to a share bin. And then, a child who loves to hoard cheese sticks could go to the share table and grab their five cheese sticks. Because why throw away a perfectly good cheese stick? And then when COVID happened, we went away from that.
Correct.
From an operations standpoint, what it allowed was, one, less trash because students were, I mean, my own daughter gets a whole plate because she likes chocolate milk. She literally goes to the food line to get chocolate milk because I won't buy it. It's a whole thing. We'll talk about it later. But my point is, she should be able to take everything that's unopened on her tray and go put it in a share table for another child who's hungry to eat, opposed to throwing it in the trash. Do we know if we're allowed to do that now, or if, what that looks like?
So food service, food and nutrition is back under business services. So I will follow up and find out.
Okay.
I met with the managers last week, and then the whole staff came in Friday as well. And I wasn't able to stay with them all day. But I will find out. But I think, as you stated, it was sort of, it got, they got rid of it because of COVID and sanitation. And then there are some schools where the principal does not want that to happen because of things that happen when you
Certainly. And I think at least affording the flexibility to a site leader to make that decision for their site, but saying it doesn't work for any school is, in my opinion, an overreach.
I'll find out and follow up.
Thank you. And in addition to that, Board Member James, great question. We used to do that. We used to have chocolate milk and other items that were available. But food service was the one that, based on their federal guidelines, sets the limitations for what is and can be used and available to other students. So it has absolutely been a federal guideline on that. So we will check because there have been some changes in recent years, as you know, with universal feeding and other, we'll find out. But that has been historically the issue, is the federal guidelines on, I don't want to say reissuing, but once it's served to a student, availability to others. I understand the question and will
Yeah.
find out if there have been any changes.
There are kids that are hungry and would eat two lunches every single day. And so if there are other children who just want the one item on the tray, and there, we have, we have the quality food to give to a child who's hungry, it just blows my mind that we wouldn't be able to do that. So I'll look forward to
I'll follow up on the share tables. I believe that's what they call them, share tables.
Yes. And chocolate milk on the à la carte would be a benefit.
Moving it to à la carte so she'd have to buy it.
Yes.
It's a whole thing.
Yes.
And while we paused for just a moment, I just want to say thank you for mentioning the amount of trash, actually, that comes out of food services. I asked last year, Ms. Lovett, to kind of do a little bit of a study to see, because all of our trays are disposable. So every single meal that's served to every single student or adult is thrown away after every single meal. And I had her do a cost analysis. Many of our cafeterias actually don't even have dishwashers in them anymore.
Correct, correct.
Nor do they have staff to be a dishwasher.
Nor space.
Nor space. But that was a part of the conversation to say, what happened to our hard plastic trays? We didn't have enough of them in storage. I mean, there was this whole thing that was happening. And so she did at least do a study on it, and the cost differential of trying to get back to the hard plastic trays that I went to school with
Yes.
is, it kind of far exceeded what we're using right now. But it just, it still is appalling to me, the amount of trash that we, because during COVID, we also, we did have the trays that were disposable, that were actually able to be biodegradable. Thank you. I couldn't come up with the word. Able to biodegrade. And they even biodegrade in plastic bags, because that was another concern I had. But they were, they would be biodegradable based on heat. And so they actually would still, regardless, in a plastic bag. But then during COVID, we only had styrofoam, which is totally against everything we were trying to do with biodegradable trays. So it's a whole thing, trash and how we actually give our students the food. So I hope that we can continue those conversations. And as we pursue building new schools, that we will think about that. And even if it's in a portion of our schools and not all, that the hard plastic trays would be a great investment, as well as actually dishwashing equipment. I know hot water costs. I mean, everything has a cost to it. But as opposed to throwing things away over and over, becoming a disposable society, let's work on teaching our students to be responsible citizens and actually reuse things.
I was going to just add to that point. So when we toured the schools, both of the schools that we toured for prototypes had very large kitchens, but had dishwashers and metal trays. And the principals we were with immediately noticed the metal trays. And so one of the big pieces that, of the conversation that I've brought to the table is, I want to know if something's going to cost more, but I want to know what that ROI is. Every year, subs, like, we even talking about flooring. If we had concrete floors versus this, and this is how much waxing costs every single year, and should we spend a little bit more money upfront so we don't have to spend it later? So those are all pieces to the puzzle that I'm really going to be super excited to bring to the board because we're having those conversations. And so upfront, it's a lot cheaper to put in the dishwasher and buy the metal trays than it is to try and redo the kitchen that's too small anyways. And so those are going to be conversations that we continue to have as we talk about how to, how to make this transition. So.
I think food service is included in those conversations when we get to the building of a school, and they get an opportunity to have input. And I think that's, that's a great idea to do that in our new schools. So I'll share that with the department as well, to be thinking about what that would look as well, to be thinking about what that would look like in a different kind of kitchen. I think some of the managers were used to that. They were used to scratch cooking, and that's a whole nother conversation. And then we went to the, you know, those combined ovens and, you know, so full circle. We had huge mixers and all of that, and those-
The good old pizzas.
Right.
Rectangle pizza.
Right. It, it's almost like a full circle, and going back to that. So absolutely, I'll share that with them as well. Capital outlay, just want to point out, the furniture and fixture dollars, those over one thousand and under one thousand, these are the point-of-sells computers, milk boxes, ovens, and other equipment. Then also, under remodeling, they are looking at remodeling Horizon to bring it to be more modernized. Also, the equipment that they are purchasing, we will be reimbursed to the tune of almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, based on a grant that they applied for. So they should be able to do even more modernization as well as purchasing equipment for the cafeterias. The other expenses and transfers, just want to point out to you, dues and fees are licenseings for the school bucks, you've heard of school bucks, and the Heartland system that we use for food service. The substitutes is our day labor. These are the substitutes that we use in our schools, cafeterias. And then the miscellaneous expense, about five hundred thousand dollars of that is indirect costs that food service pays to the general fund operating to cover things like payroll, the warehouse, and other expenses that are used on behalf of the food service. What's important for, for you to know about food service is that they have to operate within, within their means. So their revenue has to equal their expenditures. But if their revenue exceeds their expenditures, you'll see fund balance for twenty-two, twenty-three, over three months of expenditures, they have to come up with a plan, and it's called a Plan for Use of Excess Funds. So basically, for twenty-two, twenty-three, if tentative holds and fund balance ends up with sixteen point nine million dollars, they have to come up with a plan of about six million dollars of what they would do with those expenditures. They're estimating that for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, that their fund balance will be around eleven point six million, and that's pretty much the range where they, where they need to be. Okay, ready to move to special revenue funds, grants?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Total projected revenue is one hundred and four million. That is including ESER and all of our traditional entitlements. The federal and federal through state is a hundred and four point five million, and the remaining are local and state grants, both less than one percent. We spend those dollars on salary and benefits, forty-five percent for salary and benefits. The next highest is purchased services, and then the next highest after that is capital outlay. We'll look at, oh, and other category as well, twenty point five million. We'll look at the specifics in a minute. So here's the historical look at our grant funds. Bring your attention to the twenty nineteen, twenty year. That was probably the last year when we, we did not have the ESER CARES Gears Funds. So as you can see, between the nineteen, twenty, the twenty twenty-one year, we built up about fifteen million dollars in additional grant funds, and then eighty-three million in twenty-one, twenty-two, and projected in twenty-two, twenty-three, ninety million dollars. So after ESER goes away, we will go back to the normal thirty-five, forty-five million dollars in grants. The next slide basically provides a picture of the grant list at tentative. Again, there are some grants that will be amended in. As you see, all during the year, we're amending in dollars for grants. But as of tentative, there's forty-three point seven million, which is about forty-two percent of funds in the, our regular special revenue fund, and then in the, what we call the emergency relief grants, or ESER, that's about sixty point eight million, or fifty-eight percent. And then our state and local grants, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. I want to point out some grants, MTC grants, if you will. We have, on the left side, the Pell Grant, that's for scholarships. That is MTC, as well as the Perkins Post-Secondary, that is also a grant under the supervision of MTC. And this is another topic, but we talked about, we hadn't received information on the five million appropriation. The next day, we received it. And so staff has prepared the encumbrance authorization, and we have to get signatures for that. And then we'll send it on. And then I'll, I believe they'll begin releasing those dollars. So thank you for bringing that up, because it, it was a positive thing. But that's outside of the grants, but I just wanted to mention that to you. Let's see. On slide forty-two, this is just a summary of all of the different revenue sources, whether it's federal, fed through state, state and local. But we'll look at that a little bit more when we go through each category. So let's start with thirty-one ninety-nine. Again, that's the Pell money that is recorded and transferred to MTC, the Pell Grants. The next are the federal through state. I want to bring to your attention the second one, adult general education. Again, that's MTC. That was an MTC grant. But I also want to bring to your attention the changes from budget to budget. You will see large decreases from two point four million and eighty-one million, and then other fed through state, there is an addition of two point two million. So the, the education for handicap, that is a reduction in the funding at tentative for the, for our exceptional student grants, the, the reduction of eighty-one million in the edu stabilization funds, that's the ESER funds. And then the other fed through state, where there is an increase, that is our homeless grant, Title IV and hippie, the hippie grant. The other miscellaneous state, originally, we had a actual, excuse me, actual expenditures of one point seven million. That included the splash grant, Fiddler's, and you may recall the Hurricane retrofit grant. We got that in twenty-two, twenty-three. So the tentative is back down to about twenty-eight thousand, and I believe that's the Fiddler's State Grant. On this salary and benefits, just to bring to your attention that there is an attachment for not only our regular entitlements, but also an attachment detailing the ESER units. The reductions, again, is basically because of, mostly because of the ESER grants that have, those, some of those dollars have gone away. Under purchased services, I thought you might want to know some of the items that are listed under these categories. Under purchased services, that's the labor for our technology equipment, professional development for our school staff, and other contracts. Under rentals, it's, these are our softwares for operational as wedge, as well as educational software, some subscriptions for our school and departments. And then under other purchased services, printing planners for students, and of course, our charter school allocation. So our charter schools also receive, say, Title I funding, Title II funding, most of the federal dollars. But in addition to that, they also allocate funds to private schools as well. Not much there for gas and diesel fuel. And then looking at materials and supplies on slide fifty, just want to bring to your attention where it says textbooks. You may recall, we used ESER dollars to pay for textbooks, one of the major adoptions. And then there's about three hundred thousand in the budget for next year. But our predominant textbook allocation comes from the general fund operating. And you may recall, last week, we, we had a, about a three million dollar allocation for twenty-three, twenty-four, but we also have a carryover of about six million that was not used in twenty-two, twenty-three. So they'll be working with about nine million dollars in the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Other materials and supplies, that includes workbooks and other non-consumable supplies. Under capital outlay, furniture and fixture, of course, computers and other technology and sixty-eight hundred remodeling. I think we talked a little bit about the playground equip, equipment. Ms. Conrad, you had mentioned that. That's in that particular object, as well as HVAC. Both of those items are paid out of the ESER funding. Other expenses and transfers, twelve million in other personnel services. We, we used ESER funds for substitutes, as well as for stipends. And then also, under miscellaneous, that would be the indirect costs that we are allowed to charge the grants. That's revenue that's transferred to the general fund. That is based on a calculation that we provide to Department of Education, and they approve that we can use that rate. It ranges from between four, five percent, and it's basically charged against all expenditures with the exception of capital, because most expenditures are consistent. It's capital that may be higher one year or another. So that is what's recorded, and that seventy-nine hundred function, and again, that's transferred or to general fund, receives those dollars as revenue, miscellaneous revenue. Any questions on special revenue? If not, we'll move to the last fund, the internal service fund. This includes our self-funded plan for property casualty as well as health now. We have a very robust program in now in our health insurance. So the total revenue is eighty-five point three. Again, these dollars are transferred from the general fund. They do not generate revenue. This is a transfer from the general fund. They had a beginning balance of twenty-six point four million, and the local, what they call a local revenue, is fifty-eight point eight million. So general fund supports both the property and casualty as well as health. The expenditures are likewise, eighty-five point three million. Purchased services is about thirteen percent. We pay for one employee, or two employees out of this, one for health and one for the property and casualty. That particular person handles most of the workers' comp claims. We'll just look at this really quickly, property and casualty, workers' comp. Again, on its own, it has a robust program, about ten point six million. Four million is prior year, or it's the beginning fund balance. The expenditures include purchased services of four million. That's all the premiums we pay for property and casualty, while the different carriers that we have insurance with. Again, there's one employee paid out of that, that handles mostly workers' comp. And then the other category are claims that are actually paid out of this fund. And this is just a historical presentation of beginning fund balance, going back to two thousand six, seven year. Every year, we have to get an actuarial to look at our claims, and we are allowed to, to pick a percentage of, if we had to come up with the funds, if all the claims came due. So we have them to look at different scenarios, and they provide to us how much money we need to have available if that particular situation came to fruition. And then there's different percentages. And we pretty much are fairly conservative, and we look at like a sixty-five percent of this happening, sixty-five percent of this occurrence. And so this is, slide fifty-six, just looks at where we were at the beginning of each of those years, the revenue generated from, from the general fund, the operational expenditures, and then it allows us to make changes to our estimated claim, claims liability, based on what that actuary study comes up. For the health insurance, again, we're, we're fully into that program now, seventy-four point six million dollars. Again, funds transferred from the general fund. Then the expenditures, likewise, seventy-four point six million. Just want to go through this a little bit. Forty-three point seven million represents claims that we're estimating to pay. Purchased services is six point five million. That includes the administrative fee that we pay to Blue Cross, or Florida Blue. I don't think I'll ever get away from Blue Cross, but that's the administrative fee that we pay to Florida Blue. Also, our stop-loss premium, and of course Gallagher with the actuarial services. And then there are also our benefit focus platform. So that's what is covered under that six point five million. Again, we have one employee that's charged to that fund. And because we've only been self-funded since twenty-twenty, this again, provides an analysis of beginning fund balance, revenues and operational expenditures, and any estimate or adjustment that we have to make to our claims liability, to make sure that this is a sustaining program. So at this time, if there are any overall questions, I made notes that we need to, to come up with a slide and an addendum for the historical impact of the impact fees. Find out about the share table, including the chocolate milk, and begin the conversation with the food service department regarding what it would look like with our new schools going away from the current biodegradable trays.
Thank you, Ms. Postidellis. Ahead of the board's comments, I would like for us to go ahead and go into public comment for just a moment, and that might actually drive some additional conversation of the board perhaps. So if it doesn't cause you too much trouble, if we would go ahead and take public comment at this time, if there's any public comment on this presentation or anything else.
Good morning, School Board. As I look around, I sense I'm the only public, so that would be me, Kevin Shealy, with the Calum Metro Chamber and Economic Partnership. I want to thank you. I know you all are working tirelessly. Besides the presentation today, I reviewed again, School Board meeting last night. Sorry, I couldn't be here. I was already scheduled to present to another group. I, I know you're looking for ways to, to best service our students, and that includes facilities, and having the funds to build additional classrooms. facilities and having the funds to build, uh, additional classrooms in schools. I, I want you to know first off, um, from the business community overwhelmingly, we're there with you. We want to partner. We know you need the funds to do that. Um, when I look back at how much of, of my own time over the last three weeks alone has been spent on this subject, I want you to know it is a priority. Um, my phone battery is nearly dead at 9:30 this morning because I've been on the phone all, all since early this morning, uh, trying to look through and how do we do this most effectively and how do we do it together as a community to, to reach these goals? Um, I, I, I have a request and you're not going to like it, but, but I want to go ahead and make that. And, and that is for us to be able to, to slow down a little bit so that we can come up together with a plan that creates a win for everyone. And, and here's my just quick concern. I know as we've worked and, and, and Dr. James in particular, in, in looking at, at options that allows us, my greatest concern is in the area of affordability and what that means for our community. I mentioned I spoke to a group last night and their two quest, two biggest areas of concern, uh, in Marion Oaks last night were, when are we going to get more schools? And man, we've got to do something about housing affordability. Uh, it, it is, they, they are linked, they are two important items. Uh, and I know there's discussion, um, in, uh, from several of you looking at back last night, Vice Chair Thrower, uh, um, talked about the new Live Local Act and it provides a number of tools, but it's a number of tools where the details are still missing. Um, how we would use a, a, uh, impact fee waiver for affordability. Communities across the state are still trying to figure that out because how affordability and housing is determined doesn't work in that process. How do we do that? There's ties to a 30-year lien that would have to become a part of that process. How, how do we make that work? How do we figure that out on the front end versus the back end? Um, how do we ensure that you're driving the revenue that you need, uh, and also making sure that we're able to construct affordable housing in our community? I, 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 I know we need to do something and I know you're ready to move forward and, and I applaud you for that. I, I'm simply asking that if we can find a way to slow up a little bit to allow in particular the business community to come and work closely with you all to get to a, a final product that we can all support and that, that creates wins for everyone and allows, uh, you all ultimately to accomplish what you need, which is to begin driving this revenue for these schools. Uh, I, if you have a question, I'm happy to answer that, but I just wanted to relay that concern and more importantly, that request.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Shealy.
The time expired.
And the time expired.
Exactly there.
Terrific.
Very good.
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shealy.
I just wanted to clarify for Ms. Boston Ellis, which slides we, if we can add, which slides we want added for the presentation? I guess it's more for Ms. Dobbins, but which slides from today's presentation we want, if we can add to the presentation for Friday? So I think it's, I would love to see slide, slide 10, 11, and 12?
I don't want, personally, I don't want slide 12.
Okay.
I, I, if we're going to go there, then we are going to go there.
Yeah, you're right. We're talking about impact fees, so.
I think it'll be terrific for us to have that slide at another time, in another conversation. Um, but.
So slide 10 and 11, I guess, would be my suggestion if the board wants to.
I concur. Yes, I concur as well. So I, if there's a possibility of us updating and, and to Dr. James' recommendation earlier, even adjusting a bit of slide 10 to show 2011, 2012, to all of the zeros, perhaps, would, would be very interesting to see. Uh, you can see what it looks like and, you know, I, I'll trust your judgment if it looks better one way versus the other, uh, but it does seem to be quite impactful imagery to have a lot of zeros there, uh, for year over year.
The other question that I have, and I don't know the answer off the top of my head, so certainly our audience on Friday won't know, is 3,967 was what percentage of the impact fee? Was that 100%? Okay. So maybe just having at least a little guide that says what 3516 was versus 3774 and then the 3967. And then maybe for the 23, 24, having a line that says what our 40% is at each of the, for each of the projections Banash gave us potentially. Um, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of it from a percentage standpoint.
So, and, and thank you for that comment, Dr. James, because I'm also inquiring, based on the email that we received in the middle of our meeting last night from Dr. Gullett that we've also seen the, the page before, I believe that Mr. Hurley, he put together that's the timeline of the impact fee related actions. Is that also a part of the presentation on Friday? Because I know we have publicly made a statement based off of that information that the county commission had chosen in years past to not reinstate or to not increase. And I heard from a county commissioner saying, well, I never voted on that. Well, I understand, but you're a part of a body that was a previously elected official that chose in your seat to not reinstate or to not increase. So I, I think that that information is awful, also helpful, especially for those commissioners that have only been in office for two to six to eight years. Those that have been there for 12 to 16 years would have been a part of the process, but those that have only been there for a couple of years may not have that timeline. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I can tell you that it is not currently, it has not been sent. That was a document to provide, um, some context and specific data points to the board, but we certainly can. And you are correct, Mr. Hurley, he put that together, um, to provide all of the historical knowledge. So if that is the recommendation of the board to provide, that we can certainly do that. And to the point of the percentage, then I think perhaps having the percentage next to the number in this chart. So if, if both need to be, um, included, we certainly can do that. And I do think it does provide the context and the, and the timeline.
And I like the table. So honestly, if there was a way to say the 20, you know, oh, six, oh, seven, and you have the numbers with a percentage next to it, and then there's just a little notes of what Mr. Hurley, his notes was that year, so requested increase, comma denied, or whatever the notes are there, just very simple. But the table really paints a very linear picture of, um, the sequence of events for the last almost 20 years.
Okay, I'm, I'm assuming Dr. Gullett will get with us and share, because I, I'm not privy to what you're talking about, other than this.
We'll, we'll take care of that.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, cool.
Yes. Great. Um, so on the buzzer presentation today, thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. We may have additional questions or concerns specifically as we head into the Essar conversation. I know that, uh, I, I am appreciative of the handout that you gave us specifically that says tab four, slide 47 Essar. Knowing that we have 300, almost 328 positions funded out of Essar right now, uh, is a little disconcerting to me, and I know that that's what it is. I mean, those are real numbers. I, I have a question, and I don't know, this may even be for Dr. Varner, but specifically like with our homeschool liaison, that that title's going to be changing to family engagement liaison, I believe, uh, but that's 48 positions. Is that something that we eventually can move to Title I?
We, we've had some discussions about how to matriculate those units and that's why Dr. Varner is here. I guess I just got caught up and she didn't say anything, but she's here to have that discussion, uh, with you. We have made some plans, but we still have to make additional plans as well. But she can discuss what's been, uh, determined so far.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Varner, any information that you have as far as how we potentially are moving these 320, almost 328 Essar-funded positions to other grants, if possible, and then what we'll need to absorb into the general fund next year?
Good morning. So I'll speak specifically on our family engagement liaisons, our former homeschool liaisons. There are, each school has a home, a family engagement liaison and we will be picking them up if they are a Title I school, only Title I school can receive Title, can be, benefit from Title I. If any schools that are not Title I, then our Title IVA will pick them up. So we have a plan in place for the 24, 25 fiscal year to, um, move the, that, those positions and those units so that schools are still supported that way. Yes, there are over 300 and plus of people that are in, um, Essar funding right now. And some we are making plans towards how they will be funded. Some is still in conversations with different departments on, um, working on a plan, how they will continually to be funded. So there are some specifics that we are, we do have a plan for, and then there are some that are still a work in progress.
Thank you. And Dr. Varner, while you are there and you're the expert on Title I for us right now, it, it's always helpful for me to know at the beginning of a school year, the schools specifically that are not Title I. So I know the last two years that, which been basically about two schools, and I don't know what the third, the 20, 23, 20, 24 school year looks like. Last year, it was Forest and Osceola were the two schools. Do we have two, three, how, how many schools do we have that are non-Title I this year? And if you don't mind telling us which ones?
So for our, the fiscal year that we're in presently, there, um, Osceola, Forests still aren't title schools and joining that, them this year is Madison and H Street. So there are four schools that are non-titled this year.
Okay, thank you. That, that's, as a District One representative, that's helpful for me that four of the District One schools are not Title I schools. That's helpful for conversation moving forward. So, uh, those communities understand what it looks like, that additional, schools have additional funding, potential opportunities, but based on the populations of the schools within District One, four of them are not eligible. So thank you, that's helpful for me.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, thank you.
When you speak to these family, um, engagement.
Liaisons.
Liaisons being funded from Title I, is it safe for me to assume that that's the district Title I bucket of money and not the schools-based Title I bucket of money?
Yes, we cannot impact, so, yes, because we can't impact schools' funding because then it would change rank and sort. It's a whole process. So yes, to answer your question.
So a school who is a Title I school will not need to worry about absorbing a family engagement person into their Title I budget?
No, it would be paid out of our role for it, Title I.
Okay, just making it very crystal clear because we have spent money in the past. So just trying to get, get clearance on that.
Yes, Dr. Gullett.
Yes. The simple answer is yes, Board Member James, that money will not be deducted from their individual pot to spend.
While we're also speaking specifically about these Essar-funded positions, that was just an easy line item to discuss. Are there additional positions that you could speak right now and say, it looks like based on additional grants, whether it's Title I, Title IV, whatever, that there are at least a percentage of these that we know will also be able to be picked up in other grant funding, funding sources?
Well, not necessarily grant funding. Um, they would, some positions will go back to district funds, well, so they'll be, be getting paid out of the district funding. Uh, the one grant that would be, um, coming out of for units and payroll would, would be our family engagement liaisons. There are, um, other positions that will be picked up, be filled through attrition. There will be positions that will be going back with our, with the opening of, um, classroom openings. So like our intervention teachers that are getting paid right now out of, out of Essar, they would be filled back into, which is, um, predominantly our district funding because they would be going back into a different position.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions for Dr. Varner? Yes, Ms. Conrad?
I just have a question. If, so, um, the, the 1,000 is the general fund and the coded 1,300 is a referendum fund? Is that correct? I just want to make sure I didn't mix them up when you were sharing that at the beginning. Okay, so, um, because the referendum covers art, music, PE and specials, um, is there any discussion? I see a lot of these are split. The general fund is paying for some and the referendum money is paying for some. Is there the potential for in, especially in our special areas, which the referendum supports, um, that we can move those positions to being funded through the referendum?
So which funding source are you talking about? The, the ones that are in, uh, the grants or are you talking about referendum?
So if we're looking at covering the expenses for teachers in special areas that are, um, covered already through Essar dollars, could they be covered through referendum dollars?
Uh, if they meet the criteria.
Correct, correct.
Class size, paras for kindergarten, um, if there are art, music and media, um, in the Essar funds, if these were additional units, but I'm not aware of those particular units. And it has to be at the elementary school because it's restoring what was cut during the recession.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Any additional questions for Dr. Varner, specific to Essar? Okay. Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And just another point of note that I, I pulled up our 2020-ish budget also, just, um, thinking about three to four years ago, looking at what that looked like when I was a candidate before I was sitting here, what the budget numbers looked like versus what they look like today. And we definitely had public speakers that spoke about that when we were talking about impact fees and increases and what our budget numbers look like today versus then. And in addition to Essar, one of the other things that I noted was that we now have the Internal Service Fund where we are carrying the balance of the, of the self-insurance. And so that's 60-plus million dollars more on the bottom line every year versus what we had three to four years ago, just because we're carrying the balance of that. Um, so I, I, I appreciate that information, but just like for the community to be aware, yes, we know that 910 million dollars is a large budget. We know that, you know, 100 million or some odd is these Essar dollars that, that's going to go away. But we also can say 60-plus million, I probably even, I mean, it's 83 million is the total, um, but in comparison to what we've had previously, three to four years ago, carrying that balance of the Internal Service Fund for our, our self-insurance is another big chunk of that. In addition to property revenue increases, I mean, we, we get that some of those things have happened, but that part, even when Essar goes away, that part is never going to get us down to the 600 million dollar range because we're always going to have this, you know, Internal Service Fund. So I don't know if you want to speak to that, Ms. Boston Ellis, but I, again, I'm, I'm just trying to look at historical, where we were a few years ago, 2024, 2025, we're going to get at least all the Essar out of the way. So we're going to get back to a little bit somewhat of a semblance to what the community's used to. But that big increase looks like an increase when actual, actually it's saving us money in the long run.
Correct. And, um, what I would also add too is we need to look at the number of students we had in that year because the general fund operating is based on the number of students. So as students increase, the funding would increase.
Right.
But you have correctly said that those, the Internal Service Fund is, we have to show it that way, but it's not generating revenue. Um, it is being funded through the general fund operating. So you're correct with health insurance, um, and then also just the costs of, of everything now, um, requirements from our legislators. I think the $15 an hour was a big hit, um, for our district and, you know, great decision for our employees, but these are recurring costs. And, you know, every year you're looking at impacting our expenditures with increase in salary, increase in benefits, the requirements for FRS, I mean, I could go on and on. All those things that are partially funded, not fully funded. Not that we're not grateful, we're grateful for that, but there are requirements, safe schools. I mean, we don't, we're not fully funded, but this is something this community is behind and supports. So, um, those kinds of things cause the budget to increase as well.
Thank you for that. It, it is helpful dialogue to consider because as we continue to have community conversations, especially about impact fees or whatever future funding source conversation that this board might have, that will continue to be a point of potentially contention for people in our community who just look at year-over-year numbers and aren't understanding the internal pieces to that. Thank you for also speaking specifically to student, uh, increases in the number of student population because that's, we potentially have grown 2,500 students. We don't really know what this year's going to look like just yet, but it may be about 2,500 students and at a roughly $8,000 a student, that's, you know, get, those numbers start adding up. And so all of that is going to be helpful for us as we're out in the community, hearing people talk about.
It's 21 million dollars.
Thank you. So, I mean, all of that is, is just helpful to, Dr. James and her math.
Ms. Boston Ellis told me I'm good at math. I'm, I took the compliment this morning.
So, um, thank you for that. But I, I think that this just speaks, as we continue to have these finance conversations and the budget, is the time for us to talk about all of this. Uh, but that, that's just helpful specifically for me as a board. But that's just helpful, specifically for me as a board member, to say, okay, whenever I'm out in the community and somebody asks me a question, man, your budget's gone, you know, from this to this in three years, what are the, what's the response to that? And I think that we collectively have determined what all those various things are that have brought us to the point we are today, to 910 million dollars. Those are my comments on this. Anybody else have anything for Ms. Boston Ellis today?
I just had two quick comments. Thanks to Ms. Boston Ellis, but I wanted to share two quick things. I got an email this morning from the city of Ocala. The book vending machine has been delivered to the Discovery Center. So Ms. Sino worked to write a grant for a vending machine, which is token-generated. So students earn the tokens through their individual elementary schools, and they can use those tokens to buy approved books from the vending machine. We found, we worked with, in collaboration with City Council Woman Dryer, to find a great location, which is the Discovery Center in Tuscaloosa Park. And the vending machine was delivered today. So we have to button up the MOU, and then we will purchase the books through the grant and fill it. And then students will be able to go visit the Discovery Center, which is also a really cool place, and buy their books with their tokens. And playgrounds came up earlier. And so I just wanted to mention, I kind of had brought that up back in the fall or wintertime. And I haven't given up. And so one of the things we're working on is something like pledge for playgrounds. We're working on kind of coming up with a little campaign. And there are some people in the community interested in working on doing some fundraising efforts to do a pledge for playgrounds, where we would try and raise funds for maybe one at a time, and then hit that list and try and help support our schools for outside playtime. So we haven't given up on that. But that's all I had. Thank you to Ms. Boston Ellis for the presentation and listening to all of our questions.
Thank you, Dr. James. And the book vending machine's been very successful at Greenway Elementary, so I'm certain it's going to be terrific at the Discovery Center. So really cool partnership. Vice Chair Thoreau.
Thank you. And good morning, everyone. And thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. I agree that with our strong and increasing community support that we're all feeling, that it's important to continue telling our story. And our story is laden with facts. Excuse me. And all of the facts that were, oh my, that were just shared. And it's really important to continue to share that. We hear a lot about unfunded mandates, but not often enough about the partially funded mandates, of which there have been many through the years with the increasing needs that students seem to show up with. So I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, we are definitely on the right track. And as we continue to share our story that is fact-based across the community, then people will be able to understand, you know, more and more. And our support will continue to increase. I'm not sure.
Somebody's phone is ringing. Close to a microphone. Not sure whose it is. Okay. Okay, it stopped. It went to voicemail for whomever it was. Sorry, it was, it threw us all off. May not have been able to hear that, but we were able to hear somebody's cell phone buzzing.
Sounds like someone stopped at a red light playing music.
Thank you. Sorry, Vice Chair.
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Terrific. Any other comments for Ms. Boston Ellis on this? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will thank you again for all of your hard work on this. I believe we have one more work session about budget, if I'm correct. If you want to get me back on timeline, please?
That's if it's needed. We're done with the presentation. What, we've got to start working on getting to final now. But if there are questions you have that we need to bring to your attention, that's what we would bring at that time.
Okay, so Board, is there a need for us to have another? I mean, they have covered every piece of the budget at this point. Is there a need for us to have that third work session specific to the budget? Or could those additional items be presented just as a part of another work session or something else that's already previously scheduled?
I don't know that there was a lot of lingering. I didn't feel like we had a lot of lingering stuff. But if I'm wrong, I could be wrong. I don't know.
Personally, I don't know that there are lingering questions either. I think much of what you've presented here is pretty, you know, clear and concise and calculated. I know we did have questions about athletic facilities, and there was a piece to that you said with Title IV, I think that grant is going to cover some of that. There's a little bit that we've seen here. We'll see more when we see the five-year plan on September 7. We'll see what that looks like. I'm not certain what else that we had lingering questions about, if any.
I personally don't think there's a need to go further with another meeting. I think if there are some things that have to be cleared up, I think that the team could clear those things up without there being a meeting and send it to us. Ms. Boston Ellis and your team, congratulations on another great job doing it every year. So I appreciate that. It's crystal, this is crystal clear. You've made everything so, so simple for folk to understand. So thank you. And I think if there's anything else that is lingering, you guys will get it to us at an appropriate timeframe.
Okay. I think we have to provide that athletic summary of information. That's still pending.
I know previously, the only other thing that I had was a part of this budget. We are approving this referendum budget. And I know we'll have the ICROC committee that oversees what we approve. I still personally am not incredibly comfortable with having all of these funded positions that are there. I know I just heard Ms. Conrad mention, well, the ones that, I think there's like one PE position, and maybe there are a couple of those teachers that actually would fall into class size that could move over from ESER to referendum, but that would probably be the next year that we would need to do that. Personally, individual board member, I just hope that next year's referendum budget starts getting us more towards those short-term projects that aren't long-term funded needs. That's just a strong concern that I continue to have on that referendum. It is a gift that we're receiving from our community and our taxpayers every four years that we've gone out and asked for it. We don't know that this board will ask for it again. And so I continue to always want to say, even if we do ask for it, there's still no guarantee that it happens. So if we're continuing to live off of a gift as opposed to trying to live within our means, that's just continually going to be a struggle for me. But based on the 2023-2024 year, we do know that we're going to have it for the next couple of years. So I can be content with where it is today, just hearing me, knowing this individual board member wants to continue to move that referendum into a different kind of look than what we've had in the time past. So those are my thoughts. But if we have nothing else, I don't, oh, Dr. James.
Before we conclude, I just wanted to have a public discussion because last night we left off.
And we will.
Okay.
We will in just a moment. I just wanted to conclude this part with Ms. Boston Ellis, and then we'll go into individual comments of board members and superintendent, including Attorney Powers.
I did have one question.
Yes, Ms. Conrad.
I wasn't actually going to ask it, but since you brought referendum up, I did have a question. Just after our last meeting, I was just thinking, is it possible also with referendum money for us to help out with our high schools with their SROs for academic activities after school? Is that something that we're capable of using that money for?
Athletic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Athletic. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Athletic after school for our sporting events, for graduation. Are there something that we can, can we split or help fund that?
I think we're looking at putting official costs in the general fund operating. Again, these are great needs, and they're competing with, you know, our academic. So it's just about making priorities. So if we increase something, what are we going to give up? Because remember, we've got to maintain that fund balance. We've got to, you know, meet all of the requirements. And I can say we could do it, but I'm just thinking about what's ahead for us. I mean, no one else is speaking up to the referendum but Dr. Campbell. But, you know, what is the board's direction? Or do we need to move expenditures from referendum to general fund? And if we're going to do that, it's going to impact it. I think I did an analysis for you, I believe it was last year or maybe the year before. And that's 30 million dollars that would have to be moved to the general fund. So that's going to impact the pressure. And then we have the pressure of moving units from ESER into general fund. So it's, we can do it, but it's, you know, what's the priority? And it just sounds like we need to all sit down and talk through, you know, what it is we think we want to recommend to you in terms of, because remember, I was counting on being able to move some of those ESER units into the general fund operating. But we weren't able to do that this year because of the ratios. So those were two competing requests. I don't know that I answered your question, but I mean, we could. We could pay for that out of the general fund. But if we add that expenditure, you know, what is it we're going to give up? There were a lot of sacrifices balancing the budget for 23, 24. I'm sure you've heard from, we didn't touch the schools, but department budgets were cut 20%. And, you know, I'm kind of concerned about that. And based on how the revenue comes in, I would like to restore some of these budgets because they are directly supporting schools. And so we've got a lot going on with finite funds.
And I appreciate, and I know that, I know that this board is conservative. I know that you are conservative. It was just a question that came to mind after we left our last meeting, because I know security is very important to the community. I think it drives, it's a driving force for the support of the referendum. I also know that it is a struggle for the academic, the athletic, the athletic departments in our high schools. And the cost for our SROs, you know, keeps escalating. And so I would, just went home thinking about how can we help support our athletic departments as their burden has increased. And so of course, that's a conversation we always have to prioritize. I just wanted to know if it was possible. So thank you. Yes, you did the answer. So thank you.
Sorry.
Madam Chair.
Ma'am. Go ahead.
I was going to wait till comments to address some of that, which Ms. Boston Ellis has already shared. But hearing some of the requests and some of the comments, we are going to need to have further discussion on this board. We worked really hard in the time I've been here to reduce those positions in preparation for not having a referendum. And with the additional items put in the staffing plan and the conclusion of ESER coming, we have to make some tough decisions. As Ms. Boston Ellis already shared, reducing central-based department budgets, putting the staff in place at schools, which is our priority. But there are only so many dollars, and these other dollars are going away. It is, it is our responsibility, and it is now to start to plan for the conclusion of those dollars, those federal dollars. So they're competing interests, and we have to make some tough decisions. If it is the board's desire to keep some of those, then there are going to have to be some other reductions elsewhere. But the time is coming, and it's coming very quickly. As you are well aware, we were having conversations about the renewal of the referendum dollars, and that decision was made when the board approved the staffing plan. That's where those dollars are. We have to prioritize the safety, and we have to make sure that we are doing those foundational needs and providing the needs in our classrooms. So it's coming. And there are a number of positions in those, within those federal budgets. I, it is not my preference that it ended that way. I had advised everyone, let's not do anything that's going to be a long-term issue, especially with staffing. But this is where we are. So we will have to have that. And I think that we're going to have to have that fairly soon. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thoreau.
Thank you. And yes, a couple of things. As we begin to forward plan for next year, knowing that there's going to be a lot of challenges financially from the looks of it, it would, it might be helpful to start with what we're mandated with, you know, or, and I include partially mandated, anything that's mandated, and how much that costs. And kind of start from there. You mentioned last night, Dr. Gullett, that some of our federal budget has been reduced. I believe the number you shared was 3 million. And I meant to question that last night.
That's correct. Title, Title I dollars alone, just the Title I. Yes.
Right. And I wanted to ask last night, and then I just didn't, you know, why? It was a rationale given? Like, I'm just wondering. Because 3 million, that's a pretty, that's a big number. So do they just like send a budget that's 3 million less with no explanation?
We do have two additional schools that are not going to be Title I next year, so that could be a portion of it.
Yes, but the money coming into the district was reduced. So, Dr., yes, she can speak to that.
Yes, the money that was reduced came from federal. So our, the state held back 3% of that, the funding for charter. So there are charter schools that have, that are their own LEAs. We are the LEA for our charter schools, but different districts have different components happening in their schools. So they held back the 3% for any charter schools that were coming on board, and they would get the money for their charter schools to start up.
Okay, so we have one charter school starting, which is O'Callaghan Charter High, correct?
We have one. We're not talking about our district. We're talking about across the state of Florida. This came from, this came from the state of Florida. And we are, and we are our charter schools' LEAs. So in different districts, they are, they do their grants, they get their titles, and they foresee how they move forward. So they're not a part of their public school. Our charters are a part of our public.
Right.
If I may, Dr. Varner, maybe it's helpful to explain how the federal dollars flow through to the state and then are issued out to districts.
I do that the best I can. So the, our, so all districts receive federal, and I'm only speaking of Title I, Part A. So receive this federal funding based off our FTE, our Third FTE. So whatever is reported from schools to state reporting, state reporting office here in Marion County then reports it to the state. Based off of those numbers is how we get our big percent, our allocation. So depending on the number of students we have and what is reported from each school to the state, that is, that determines our total allocation. Now, once we receive our total allocation, then our department has to go and, and, and look at the total allocation, see what schools qualify, are eligible for Title I, and then do their allocations based off of the FTE3, the number of students that they had at that time. And then that's how they get, the schools receive their allocation. But we get, the state kind of follows what we do for our schools, they do for each district. So it's, it depends on the number of students that is reported from state reporting for...
And to add, so to clarify, it's based on student need, not on schools. So the money comes in based on need, and then we disperse it to schools based on their thresholds and percentages. So federal level, state level, and then dispersed.
So then I would understand that for some reason or reasons, we had 3 million dollars less need.
Which is hard to understand.
That's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
So we, they held back, they held back 3% of our federal funds this year.
They held it back?
Yes.
Does that mean that they might?
They may very well.
Give it back?
They may. We wait and see.
You know, it could be a whole in-service, I'm sure. But when you, when you hear 3 million dollars, and now I understand why they're, maybe I understand now why God didn't ask me to ask the question last night.
But to be, to answer your question more simplistically, no, there's not a reduction in need by our definition. It's just been held back to us. Might it come later? We would certainly hope so. But there's no indication in our data that we've had a reduction in student need of eligibility.
Okay, so if there's been no reduction in need, is there a process to, to request that it be reconsidered?
So we don't request it if at the district... So we don't request it if, at the district, at the state level, if, and I don't know what their timeline is. So when, at the state level, if they decide that there is no LEA, new LEA charter schools out there, then they will redisperse every district their three percent that they withheld. If there is a need for charter schools, then they will, I'm assuming they will not.
Okay, and so we don't have any new LEA schools, right? Charter schools?
Our, our department is.
I'm just worried about my district. I mean, I sympathize with the other ones, I do.
I'm talking statewide, so every district is different. And our, just because our district, our department is the LEA, it doesn't separate us from the state.
Oh, Lord.
Doesn't make sense.
I'll think it over. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions of Dr. Vardner or Ms. Boston Ellis? Okay, Ms. Conrad has another.
Just one little thing. I was just thinking about the presentation financially and talking about mandates and what's funded and what's not funded. And I brought this up with Dr. Gullett at one point. I think it would be beneficial, and maybe there's a document, and I haven't seen it, that showed what was mandated, how much of it is funded, and how we, the other ways that we have to fund it. So speaking about fencing, you know, with, so we're using, we can't use referendum dollars for that, so we're dipping into the general fund. But looking at safe schools as a whole, all of the creative ways we are funding and tackling that task. I think it would not only be beneficial for me, but it would be beneficial for the community to have an understanding of how creative we have to be to meet the mandates that the state gives us. Because I think the general public thinks it's mandated and it's funded. So I just, in the future, I think it would be helpful to have a document, kind of like we did with Discipline, here's the hot sheet, and let everyone know what all has to happen to get these items completed. So that's just an ask I have.
Board Member Conrad, I agree with you on the fact that we get a lot of mandates, whether they be fully funded, partially funded, unfunded. And I think that chart needs, the community needs to know that. Because when we're having these conversations with the budget, when we have these conversations with federal programs and about these grants and different things, it clears up, it takes the muddiness out of it because they are thinking one thing, and sometimes even we are thinking one thing.
Right.
And we're not correct. So I agree with you there.
Thank you for that conversation. And I liken it to, I can't remember which session of FSBA training it is. It may be in the Policy Governance section. Took all those classes really fast, but I think it's in Policy and Governance. Or maybe it's in New School Board Member Training, where they do slides of, and here are all the things that we have to teach in our schools that have nothing to do with actual reading, writing, and arithmetic. And, you know, everything from, I think it's even swimming and vaping, you know, not vaping, and all the different, the traffic laws and all the things that we have to do that are actually in state law that we have to teach. So I'm likening it to that, but it's a really good point. If we were to have some kind of one-sheeter to say, here are all the things that are mandated, and here's how that's funded and/or not funded, that would be another great community conversation for our legislators next year.
Thank you. And again, circling back to thinking forward and forward planning to build our budget for next year. You know, if I can't even sit up here and understand the fuzziness of where that three million dollars went and why, you know, how are we going to present to the community? And sure, you know, but they get tired of hearing, well, it's just really complicated. Well, it is really complicated, but somebody came up with a formula somewhere and a justification somewhere, and we have to figure out a way to distill it and present it because we've got great community support and people want to help. And we need budget hawks. I think each one of us sitting up here are budget hawks. Who wants to waste money? You know, nobody wants to waste money in their own family. We all want to see the return on investment. So it's just understanding it and being able to present it in a very clear and definitive way. So I appreciate the, I'm like, but that's me already thinking about, okay, budget isn't even really done yet and thinking about next year. But we have to because we got a lot of money in a short amount of time, and it covered a lot of needs that we've always had. And now we have to figure out a way to still meet them.
Thank you for the conversation, Board. Thank you, Dr. Vardner. Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. We will move on to board comments. And Ms. Martinez Lopez, anything out of the Board Services Office?
No, Madam Chair, just a reminder, you do have shade session at one.
Yes, thank you for that. And Attorney Powers.
Yes, ma'am.
You can lean into the microphone, I'm sure, would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so we, we've done a lot of discussion today, which is going to impact our impact fee discussions as well. What I would, I believe, rather than trying to give a comprehensive summary that has overall information that we've already gone over and rehashing those and trying to give a long dissertation of everything that exists, based on the discussions that we've had previously, the community input, and also the discussions that we've had last night and today, I would just stand ready to answer any questions that any board member might bring up as part of my discussion here, as part of my board comments. So it's sort of a moving target because there's so many things that we might have questions about and things that I might get into that you really don't have a question about. And of course, it's difficult for me to communicate that information to you collectively as a board outside of these particular meetings. So if there are any questions that you wish to get into about how anything that we've discussed has a legal impact, I'll do my best to answer those.
So the only question that I'll have, and then I'm going to have to pass the gavel because I have another appointment, and then I'll see you all at one and listen along. But my only question, and you and I were sharing communication back and forth. I had a community member reach out and ask about if we were to kind of switch gears off of what we discussed last night and went with a per-square-foot rate. Can you talk about that a bit as to the legal impacts of that, just for the community to hear it publicly?
Yes, ma'am. So when it comes to a per-square-foot rate, that is one of the acceptable rates that we can do under statutes. Because the document that I had been reviewing there does indicate that's, that's acceptable because it is an across-the-board. However, the per-square-foot generation rate in saying that we're going to, for example, set it at two dollars per square foot, the only difficulty there is not a highly significant one, but it is that we could be asked to show that student generation data which backs that up. So for example, if you've got a two-bedroom, fifteen-hundred-square-foot house versus a two-bedroom, three-thousand-square-foot house, do the student generation rates differ between those two? They may, or they may not. There are two bedrooms. We can generally assume that the statistics will fall such that two-bedroom houses tend to have similar student generation rates, regardless of square foot. However, in one case, you would be asking someone to pay more for the three-thousand-square-foot house, double in fact, than you would as to the single, as to the fifteen-hundred-square-foot house. That being the case, however, it is practiced currently in some districts, and I don't see evidence of any, any court indications that there is any difficulty or problem with that, so long as we don't have a system which imbalances it so that we charge a lesser overall rate based on the housing. Well, we can charge the lesser amount based on housing type or greater amount based on housing type. But when we get into a tiering structure, there are sort of semi-tiers that end up being created by these as well. So the short answer is, yes, a per-square-foot calculation can in some instances work. And we would just have to ensure that we write that carefully so that we don't run into any stumbling blocks. The, it isn't, it isn't substantially different from a tiered approach, but it is also not substantially different from a flat-rate approach either. So that is a possibility. As opposed to saying that every, every new residential housing that fits into certain classes, multifamily, single-family, that those would be treated just by whatever the designation was, multifamily, single-family, residential, those kind of classes or groups. And if you'll give me just a moment, I'll give you a moment to generate any questions you may have related to that while I actually pull up a document that I was reviewing as well. So I'll need just about one minute. If there's any board member discussion on those items while I do that.
I'm not ready to make a statement because I'm, I'm not in a space to make a statement right now.
No comment, really? I, I'm happy with what we discussed yesterday, and I think it's the most legally sound and solid choice for us to move forward with.
With the flat rate forty percent? What about adding the caveat about being able to have them be reviewed and increase in making sure that that's written in? I think Dr. James had a good point when it came to that.
I think what we've reviewed, what Jeremy, Attorney Powers, has shared with us is that we could build in an increase plan. Well, it's not even every four years, though.
Yeah, as to that part, the increase, here's where we are on that. Because that is a bit of a separate issue. The statute regarding the 163.31801, its most recent revision was in 2021. And revenues generated by the impact fee, one of the things that it has to say about that is, of course, we talked about the, we talked about the Affordable Housing Waiver, which was also brought up and discussed today. But each local government that adopts and collects an impact fee by ordinance, and each special district that adopts, collects, and administers an impact fee by resolution must satisfy all of the conditions specified in the act. And among those are an impact fee for increases, an impact fee that is, that may not be increased retroactively for a previous or a current fiscal or a calendar year. An impact fee increase may not exceed fifty percent of the current impact fee rate unless we go through the public workshop process that we did. We are permitted to go through that process, and we have done so. So that exempts us from that particular provision. However, we also need to take into account another couple of factors here. So I've got, I've got these on tabs, so I need to pull a couple of these up. One moment.
One of those factors, Attorney Powers, I think I was reading also, thank you for the information, is that we can't use impact fee money for previously approved projects.
Right, and that is that revenues generated by the impact fee may not be used in whole or part to pay existing debt or for previously approved projects unless the expenditure is reasonably connected to or has a rational nexus with the increased impact generated by the new residential or non-residential construction. I don't think that's going to be an issue for us here. It's just something to be advised of, that if we were to begin approving a bunch of things right now and then immediately, you know, ninety days from now is when we get an impact fee finalized and together, that could, we'd still have to be able to show that rational nexus between those two.
If I may.
Please do.
I just think that it's really important. I think we've really all spent a lot of time on this. And I know that my bandwidth for like belaboring this conversation, I think similar to many of you, is just about out of gas. So as Vice Chair said, forty percent was what we landed on last night. Do we all agree we're moving forward with forty percent? Can we just like consensus, yep, are we consensus with that? And then can we move to the next piece? So that we don't have to belabor the semantics of the pieces that have nothing to do potentially with what we want to do.
I'm there. I'm definitely there. And, you know, I thought that we were there last night with the forty percent. They, to me, the only thing left on the table was the, was the increase.
And I can speak to that. So the bill created a cap on the amount local governments can increase impact fees. The cap limits the increase to no more than twelve-point-five percent in a given year, no more than fifty percent over a four-year period, unless we go through the process that we did. Since we did, that's where we are now. Should a local government wish to increase an impact fee without the phase-in structure that's noted above, it must provide calculation of how it arrived at the need for the amount based on the most recent and localized data, which we have done, including accounting of how previous impact fee revenues were utilized. We'll also need to hold at least two publicly unnoticed workshops, which we have, dedicated to the extraordinary circumstances necessitating those exceptions. So we've done that. We're permitted to do it. However, the question still becomes, we would end up having, the net effect would be an increase if we say we're going to have forty percent, and then we're going to increase that forty percent by three percent each year or something like that. Those are addition, the net effect is, those are additional increases, and we're going to have to have study data that indicates why we can do that. It is smarter for us to say, we want X number, and we can still opt in a phase-in if we choose to do that, rather than, here's the number now, and we're going to increase that number every year from here forward. So if the, if the target goal is forty percent, and we want to start at thirty percent, ramped up by two percent a year, then we could do that. If the target number is forty percent, then we need to be forty percent. If the target number is actually fifty percent, then we need to put fifty percent and start at forty percent and ramp it to there.
I'm just confused because we have a whole study that says that a hundred percent is the number. So we have all the data in the world to show that a hundred percent is the number. So theoretically, couldn't we start at forty percent and that three, at five percent a year or three percent a year, for however many years that is to get to a hundred? Could we not just say for the next thirty years, we're increasing by three percent, and that will get us to a hundred, and the data is, the Benash study said a hundred?
Yes, the problem is the phase-in. The phase-in creates the net effect of being an increase each time that this year is different from last year, and next year is different from this year, and the year after that is different too. Every one of those, even though we all recognize it as being a phase-in of a total percent, if we're doing it as a phase-in, every year, the net effect is that it is an increase each year. So if, if we are going to pick a number, whatever that number is, forty percent or fifty percent, we've done all the work and have all the data to justify making that the number from day one. I don't, I don't see why we would need to phase it in in a different way, but we can. The problem is, if we attempt to do that, the potential for challenge is that it does, it does end up being an increase annually. Starting with the number that is the target number means that that issue is resolved. So is there a need for a phase-in at all? If we want the number to get to a hundred percent, we can start at a hundred percent. If we want the number to be fifty percent, we can start at fifty percent. So if we are looking for a smaller number in order to sort of ease into it, it's like an adjustable rate mortgage, you know? And so that, there's a little bit different there.
Okay, so then, do we want to just do forty percent? And if when we want an increase, we're going to go ask for an increase? And they can say yes or no? Because like, there's too much, in my opinion, too much heartburn attached to a number bigger than forty. I think we're getting into risky territory by saying, we're going to start at sixty, but we're going to phase in. I just feel like there's heartburn attached to that. And that's just what I've heard of the community, and so, I mean.
I agree. And that's why I thought the increase was a good solution because as a board, we were trying to compromise with what the community had asked of us. Because our study says we can ask for ten thousand. Because our study says we can ask for $10,000. We're not asking for that because the community came forward and asked us to please be cognizant of affordable housing, you know, and all the things. And so I'm good with 40%. I am disappointed if it's going to be a struggle for us to ask for the 3% each year, or we're going to have to go through a process. I don't know what that process looks like. If it looks like the process that we've been through has been extremely time-consuming.
And so that I can understand and perhaps direct the question better, I would want to know, what is our purpose in phasing in via annual increases as opposed to picking a number and making that the number? And I can assume that that would be based on the fact that that would be an easier swallow for some in the community to phase it in more gradually. Now, the statute does account for phase-in in specific steps when we are not increasing impact fees in a way that we've already justified that we can do that. So we don't have to do a phase-in. However, if we do a phase-in, now I'm concerned that that does present the, what amounts to an annual increase, and we would make, we might need to then provide annualized data, which is a bad thing.
I have a question. The reason, I think, the way I see it is, asking for more money if we need it later is because we're trying to be responsive to the needs of the community, and the economy moves fast these days and it's uncertain. So 40% seems like a good number for where we are now. My question is, if we find a year or two from now that we need to move to 43%, do we have to pay for a whole nother year-long Benesh study and do all these gyrations? Because I feel like we've never, that there's never been an impact fee before anywhere. You know, that's what this is starting to feel like to me, that we're just bogging down into this quagmire and that anybody that ever did this before suddenly developed amnesia. It can't be that difficult, you know? So let's just go back to my first question.
And if I may, to partially answer or respond to that, one of the issues we have here is that the farther we get from doing a clean, the Benesh study, we hired a consultant that gives us a number and gives us all of the data.
Right.
And in order to try to accommodate a variety of stakeholders, we have looked at, how many now? I mean, many different variations. Every variation has its own potential difficulties, and that's not just something that finance needs to worry about, it's something that you need my legal advice on. And then I've got to go back and find out, well, have other counties done this? If they have done this, how did they do it? And was there a challenge? And did it sustain that challenge?
And you're doing your due diligence, and that is fantastic, and I know it's greatly needed. But where I see this potentially going, if we're not very careful, is that we're going to end up down a rabbit hole, and that timeline is going to continue to be extended, and we don't have time for that. We don't have time for that. So how long is this Benesh study good for that we just bought and paid for?
I think we have to have completed a study within the previous year. That's...
To do the initial request.
To do the initial request, right.
Okay, what about a subsequent request, like to go up by 3%?
Well, subsequent requests, we can, and that's part of what statute, increases can only be done every four years. So unless they were phase-in increases.
No, we don't have to do another study, though, to get another increase.
Not if the increase is under a certain amount, 25%.
Okay.
So we could go, in four years from now, we could ask for 50, or we could ask for 60, or we could ask for 65, without having to do another study.
Yes.
That is exactly what I needed to know.
Because we don't have the, because for such a long period of time it had been suspended, we didn't have historical data justifying what the amount now would be.
I would propose that we go with the 40. Let's make it very clear that we intend to get an answer and a vote from the county commission as soon as possible, based on their schedule of meetings, and request politely and respectfully that it be prioritized. Because, and all of us that have been working through this together, and we've had everybody at our public hearings and so on, you know, they know that this is where it is, and it's time to get this buttoned up. Those are my comments.
I'm on board with that. My last remark would be that after reviewing the legislation tying to affordable housing, I believe wholeheartedly that it is not this board's place to define, neither define affordable housing nor share guidance on how an affordable housing waiver should be implemented in the county. So I know that there was a speaker today that spoke to that, and I wholeheartedly do not believe that it is this board's place to offer that. That is a county commission's job. So this board, in my opinion, is asking for 40% based on the three different numbers that Benesh gave us for the three different sets of housing, and that is our ask. We are not addressing the affordable housing. That is something that the private sector and/or the county commission can work on on their own accord.
And decide, yeah.
Yeah, that is not for this board to decide. That is not a problem for this board to solve. So I feel really strongly that we've done everything to bend over backwards to support this community, and this is where we have to land. And I feel I can lay my head down on my pillow at night knowing that we have heard this community and we have done what's best. So we're going to go to a joint meeting on Friday with that as our proposal, if everyone is in agreement. And hopefully, we will have a joint consensus from Friday's meeting. It will go, if I understand correctly, the next steps, it would go on a board meeting for us to vote on and then get sent to county commission for a vote for them. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Further, I would propose that if it goes in that direction, that we schedule a special meeting within the rules of all of that and get that approved so that it can be forwarded on to the county commission for them to vote on as expediently as possible.
Well, and we'll have a board meeting, not the Tuesday after, but the Tuesday after that. So we could add it because the agenda will post, we'll have the joint meeting on Friday, and then the following Tuesday would need to be the posting of the agenda for the meeting. So I think I understand the timeline, that we could put a spot on the agenda for the 20, whatever meeting that is, 21st, 22nd, for us to vote on this item, and then it would get sent to county commission, which should have more than enough time for it to be on their agenda for their first September meeting. And it will be in their hands to vote up or down, and then we will proceed accordingly.
Good. I'm good with that.
You're good, Board Member Conrad? Are you good, Attorney Powers?
I am, and I just want to say thank you because Section 420.9071, which is all about the waivers, that portion is 30 subsections in and of itself. And so the community, when they, when someone talks about, that's difficult to get, yes, it's difficult to get. And imagine trying to, it's difficult to get because there's a lot to analyze. And imagine trying to do it without a rulebook and just...
And it's not our job. It's not your job. It's not our job. That is not our job. And we have done a lot to try and do things that I believe are outside of our job to accommodate this community, and I'm not going any farther. We're not solving that problem. Someone else can carry that ball across the finish line.
And also, being able to put it on for that board meeting that you just identified, that would give me time to make sure everything's drafted. And then also, without alterations and significant content, be able to ensure by review that I've got everything that it needs to have and for the language structure that needs to go in with the actual statutory request. Because I wish it were as easy as just inserting our numbers. It may be, but I have to make sure that the numbers don't also change anything with how we need to put an explanatory paragraph in. So it'll give me time to find those and plug them in.
Awesome. Ducks in a row. I like it. Board Member Cummings?
No comment.
Okay, well, I believe we have reached consensus on this item. It will be 40%. That's the ask.
For the seventh time.
Let's roll. Okay.
I got no further comments.
No further comments. Okay, Dr. Golladay.
I will be very brief. Thank you, Vice Chair, through our two quick items related to funding. Board, hopefully by tomorrow, you will receive the final draft. I have a one-pager coming of capital, new growth dollars, and maintenance. So you'll have the one-pager that will address those items and all of our possible funding streams. I think you all knew I'd asked for, gathered the team to do a one-pager. So relatedly to telling the story and having the facts, you'll have that sent to you, as I said, hopefully by tomorrow. And relatedly to Board Member Conrad's question earlier, Heather, he asked the team to do another document because I think that's part of what we have to do a better job of telling our story and having the facts all in one place. So I'm not going to show it publicly, but I have some drafts. They're working on that next as soon as they get the budget done. As you know, they've been very busy with this budget. So as soon as that's done, that work's already in the process. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golladay. Board Member Cummings? Nothing? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. And it did take it down to the wire. I understand that we did have a public speaker earlier today that had another angle for us to consider. So I am confident that we have not only considered all of the angles, that we have tried to remeasure them and put them as neatly as possible into a very straightforward ask, which I believe we came to today. So thank you very much, everyone. If there isn't anything further, this, oh, any public comment? Seeing and hearing none. This meeting is adjourned at 11:41 a.m. Thank you so much.